Call City Council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Cadala.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Felice.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corrin being present, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, have a motion to approve the minutes, March 18th, 2010.
So move second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do any citizens wish to address the City Council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Hearing none, I do not have any written communication. Under Mayor's report, may I have a motion to approve a resolution opposing reduction of the local government distributive fund? Is there such a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I have a question.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Hold on, please. Alderman Wesley.
Was this the proposal that Naperville put together and all we did is put our numbers in there?
Yes, that's correct.
My question is, as mayors and manager, I know this is going for management and management, but is a mayor and management also sending one in behalf of the whole, or are we doing them singling?
Were you asking, are they collecting and distributing it?
No. What I'm saying is, does our town doing it, or are all the towns involved in mayors and management doing the same thing?
This came up at the last board meeting, and to my knowledge, all towns will be passing this resolution. The recommendation is for all towns to adopt the resolution.
Will the mayor and management committee pass one too? In our behalf too, or no?
Typically, we do not do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
And just by way of background, Governor Quinn has proposed that the city share, all municipalities' share of the income tax distributive fund be reduced by a figure of 30%, and the effect to Wooddale is slightly over $300,000. So anything further on the question? If not, roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
That passes as resolution R-10-08. Also under Mayor's report, for those of you that didn't see it, I placed an article before you that the House bill sponsored by the City Wooddale, House Bill 5555, did pass the House and now has gone over to the Senate side, and Senator Pankow has picked up that bill on the Senate side on our behalf. And the third thing I want to mention under Mayor's report, unless Alderman Winger, Alderman Shockey, do you have an announcement you want to make, either of you of your Ward Three meeting?
Sure, the Ward Three meeting is March 27th, that's this coming Saturday, and it starts at noon. We expect it to go about an hour and a half to two hours, but we have the location until 3:00 p.m., and it's at the Georgetown West Town Home Association Clubhouse. Thank you.
And food is being served?
That is correct.
And what's the food?
Christie's Restaurant.
You'll draw a bigger crowd if you announce.
Absolutely, finger food, so Christie's Restaurant is very generous in providing the croissant sandwiches that are also served at the Wooddale train station, so it's a good time to sample as well. Thanks.
And that brings us to the managers' report.
Mayor, the mayor's given me special dispensation to sit down with the staff tonight because I'm going to be giving the briefing on the budget, and I'd rather be down here looking at you all as opposed to being up there. Just a couple things. First of all, the Illinois Tollway Authority had a meeting this morning to discuss the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway project. Ross Clicker from our staff was in attendance. No decisions were made, and there hasn't been a decision yet with respect to whether IDOT will handle that project, or whether it will be turned over to the Tollway. The DMMC has recommended that the Tollway be the lead agency on that, and we're still pushing for that. They understand that, no decision's been made, but we're monitoring that progress. And because tonight's a special meeting, we've offloaded everything from next week, April 1st, onto this meeting, and carved out next meeting as a possible discussion on the budget. If we can't get resolution tonight, we'll have a special meeting next week, the 1st of April, to continue discussions on the budget. And again, it's our hope that by April 30th, we'll have a resolution to that whole issue. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Alderman Lewitin.
City Manager Dowd, I want to refer to the report you gave us in our brochure, in our package regarding the IDOT reconstruction program that begins the 1st of the month. Could you, as a courtesy to the citizens of Wooddale, give them some advice to how to avoid that six-month project on the Eisenhower?
Well, I think in one of the articles I read, an IDOT spokesman suggested that you listen to the radio with respect to traffic bottlenecks, and as he said, pick your poison. I-290, the Eisenhower, is going to be resurfaced from Thorndale all the way to downtown, beginning in April, and it will continue through the year, hopefully finishing in September. And there will be significant traffic tie-ups on 290 into Chicago and out of Chicago through that time. So I would suggest that anybody with alternatives like the Kennedy, take I-90 as opposed to 290, because 290 is going to be a real bottleneck for the next six months or so.
Thank you. I really just wanted you to make the announcement, because people watching on television will be hearing about it for the first time, and when they go to work next week, if they take the Eisenhower, they'll add about an hour to their driving time.
And I happen to take 53 South every day on my way into work, and there's a big sign just outside of Beasterfield, but unfortunately, if you get off on Thorndale, and you're probably not going to know about it until you're in the middle of it. So I would suggest you monitor that. There was a long article in the Tribune on Sunday about that, and I hope everybody will get the message as soon as possible and avoid that if at all possible.
Brings us to committee's chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Cadala.
One item is the adoption of the 2009 International Code Council, the International Building Code. John Forrest, would you like to take this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the City of Wooddale enforces the 2003 International Building Code Group, which we adopted in 2005. The code contains several standalone codes that address different disciplines and together as a unit, pretty much all types of construction and life safety issues are covered. Wooddale has already adopted the 2009 International Energy Code, as mandated by the state of Illinois, and I've sort of been, as you probably were, torn back and forth about whether we should adopt this code. The main reason is that the 2009 residential code requires fire sprinklers be installed in all residential occupancies, which is going to add quite a bit of cost to that project. I have talked and networked with several building officials over the last few weeks. Many of them have been holding off adopting the 2009 code under the thought that in the 2012 code hearings, that would be removed from the codes. And then last week, I was talking to some people from the International Code Council in Washington, and last Wednesday, they voted that in the 2012 code cycle and the 2015 code cycle, they are not going to entertain any motions to remove that requirement. So it seems at this point, we should go ahead and consider the 2009. We do not have to start requiring the sprinklers until January 1st of 2011. So in the meantime, what I would like to do is continue doing some research on that, talk to legal counsel, and find out if we adopt that, if we would be able to either modify or remove that section. Staff has done some research, and we've, you know, through NFPA, research and reports that they've come up with, we found that probably 40% of residential fires start in the kitchen or in the cooking areas. Heating appliances are the second leading cause of residential fires, and the third leading cause is arson. So my thought is, perhaps we can modify the sprinkler requirement and have sprinklers installed in certain key areas of the house. That would keep the cost down. You could probably run the sprinkler system off the residential water supply. So we anticipate in probably May, will we be coming back to the council with our revised local building code amendments, and maybe we can look at that sprinkler requirement at that time. So what we'd be talking about adopting now, most people feel that the Wooddale Building Code is this book here that's available. This is our local building code amendments. This is not the ICC code. This refers to the ICC code. So what we're going to be recommending adopting is the International Building Code, which is this book, which covers all the commercial and industrial multifamily properties, and then this is also the umbrella code. This refers you to some of the sub-codes. The residential code is for single-family houses, duplexes, and townhomes. That would be this book. This is the one that includes the sprinkler requirements. We would go with the International Fire Code, which is this one. Mechanical Code, which is this one.
Wow.
The Fuel-Gas Code, which is also tied in with the Mechanical Code. The Existing Building Code, which is actually important code, this one works, refers us back and forth to some of the other code groups, and this dictates the extent of compliance to the new code, that you have to bring existing buildings when you're doing work in them. Then, of course, we have the Plumbing Code. We also are required by the state of Illinois to adopt the Illinois State Plumbing Code, which is this one. We have the Property Maintenance Code, which is, again, an important code that we use quite a bit in Wooddale. And we have the Performance Code. Now, the Performance Code is a supplement to the code group. It allows the building official alternative means to achieve compliance to the code. The code is considered a prescriptive method. It says, it's like following a recipe. If you want to end up with this product, you put in a tablespoon of this, a cup of this, and this, and you get it. The prescriptive, or the Performance Code allows the building official a little latitude to accept alternative methods. As long as you achieve the same result, we can do that. That would be this one. And then, of course, we've already adopted the Energy Conservation Code. One final code, of course, is the Electrical Code. We have to adopt the National Electrical Code. That's this one. So the bottom line is, this is the Wooddale Building Code.
Let's see, I guess.
Alderman Wesley, I think you volunteered to review that on our behalf and make your recommendation whether we should approve that. Was that correct?
No problem, Mayor. I'm glad you've got a strong arm.
Well, I thought it might be interesting for you to see what the actual Wooddale Building Code is. As I say, most people think it's just this little book on the bottom. That's our local amendments. We will be revising those. There's a lot of obsolete and conflicting information in there, so staff is working right now to remove that, and we expect a much smaller document. What we're finding, code enforcement is something that's always evolving. There are some major changes this year with the Energy Code. I think, as I mentioned when we were talking about adopting the Energy Code, one test that's going to be required now when a new building is finished is what they call a blower door test. That's where they actually pressurize the house. They monitor how many air changes per hour happen in the house. So that's something we're going to have to be monitoring. It can be done either by staff, which would require training and the purchase of materials, or we can have a third party do it and just get the results. Another thing that the Energy Code is requiring is that typically, in the past, if somebody wanted to replace a window in their home, if the window was the same size as the window they were, as the old window, they would not need a permit. The Energy Code now requires that you come in for a permit, so that we can verify that the new window that's going in is compliant to the Energy Code. Our fee schedule is not set up for that at this time, so one thing I'd like you to consider, and maybe we can get back to it another time, is do you want us to charge a fee for that? Or should we perhaps do it as a non-fee permit, like we do now with water heaters? Maybe charge an inspection fee to cover staff time? That's something you might want to consider. One other thing that's happening now, and this will be affecting the Existing Building Code, is starting in April, any remodeling that's done on an existing house that involves more than six square feet on the interior or 20 square feet on the exterior, if the home was built prior to 1978, it has to be tested and certified that it's, all the work has been done, all the practices have been followed, and all dust cleaned up to get rid of lead. And then the remodelers also required to submit a certificate to the city that any lead-containing materials that have been affected by this remodeling have been properly cleaned up and disposed of. So that's, it's not, it's a separate federal requirement that we now have to follow as well, but just another layer of enforcement and something that contractors are going to have to do. So that's, you know, bottom line is, our recommendation is to go forward with the 2009 Code Group, and we will be coming back to you probably in May, and we'll find out if we're able to adjust or revise that sprinkler requirement. Any questions?
Alderman Cadala.
Two questions. A few months ago, the state of Illinois required that all the individual municipalities adopt the 2009 Energy Code. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is the same mandate coming down with regards to the 2009 Building Code Group that you just presented to us?
It's been talked about, but I don't believe they've made a final decision yet. That's something that I still need to follow up on.
And is it, is it your recommendation? I just want to be sure we're all clear here, that you're saying that we should, according to your professional opinion, adopt this 2009 Code Group, and even upon that adoption, you will still investigate any opportunities to make amendments to that group?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Alderman Shockey.
Is the federal government going to send us a group of inspectors, or are they sending us the money to do this?
For the lead testing, or for the Energy Code blower door testing.
For all of them.
I would have to say no.
No to sending us inspectors?
No to sending us inspectors or money.
How about the money?
Remodelers, as far as the lead testing goes, anybody doing remodeling, they are required to have one member of their staff certified in lead remediation, and that person is supposed to supervise the job, and he has to verify that the lead has been properly, lead paint is what we're basically talking about, that the lead paint has been properly removed and cleaned up to all the required guidelines.
How are we supposed to pick out which houses to put through this pressure thing with the air?
That will be any new home, or a home that's undergone more than 50% to value substantial remodeling.
Not the six feet, square feet?
No, no, it's two separate issues. The Energy Code is what requires the testing where they pressurize the house. That's just to verify that the house is tight and it meets the current energy standard. The lead testing that is for any home built before 1978, where there's going to be remodeling taking place.
But no money either?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, if I understand, the council's going to pass this tonight, that's the feeling I got here tonight, the only thing is, I suggest, John, that we follow with that sprinkler system for these houses, because according to what I understand it, they would have to put in a separate water line from the street. So now you're even costing more on this. So, and then the other thing that I found out, which I made a phone call down in Champaign, fire came down there, they have problems with the sprinkler system being installed in houses that people turn them off. And where does that fall under, we adopt this code, where does that fall under if the house burns down? Does that fall under our jurisdiction that even though they install it, we enforced it, they turn it off? Where are they coming back to? I strongly suggest passing the ordinance, but I strongly suggest the building department move forward with it and get legal opinion on trying to modify that section in that code book.
Yeah, I agree.
I will be, if there's a motion on the floor, then I.
And in fact, you're correct. I have heard of one instance where a house burned to the ground that had a sprinkler system. The homeowner turned off the system because one of the heads was leaking, and rather than get it fixed, he just shut the system off.
I just want to know what the liability, where that falls under the code, if that does happen.
Correct.
In our, in our situation here. So that's all I have to say about that, Mayor.
Alderman Lewitin.
Mr. John Forrest, how much money does that add to an average contractor's home? Say they're building in an R1, a large home. How much actual increase in the selling price would be required to meet their profit margins? $25,000, $50,000?
The one builder I talked to who built a home in Glen Ellen that requires fire sprinklers, built a 3,000-square-foot house, and the system cost him $12,000 to install.
Can I ask you, can you refuse to do this? Are these mandates that are coming from Springfield and Washington that you really have no choice in the matter?
Well, this is national code, and again, this is why we've been kind of wrestling with this. This is, this is the national code. Typically, we are allowed to amend the national code, but one of the things that councils, I've already spoken with her about, we have to check on to see if we actually have the authority to remove something that would be considered a life safety item. Now, you know, again, as Alderman Wesley said, it becomes a maintenance problem, because we really don't have any control over whether or not somebody turns their sprinkler system off. They can, from what I've read in the code, you can't, if you're domestic, you have to analyze the water system or the water supply that's coming into the house to be sure that the pipe is sized properly. Some municipalities may require a separate service, but the code will allow you to use one service, and you can run the system off the domestic line, but then you have to put what they call an RPZ on there. You have a commercial building, you might be familiar with that. That's the backflow preventer that goes on the water service.
Yeah, that's very important if there's a dentist in the building.
Correct. So you have to put one of those on the system, because when the sprinkler system fills with water, that water does not flow throughout the house, so it sits in the pipes, it can become stagnant. You have to have that backflow preventer in there to prevent that from mixing with the domestic water and making you sick. Well, we require backflow preventers right now on lawn irrigation systems, but they also have to be tested once a year. So again, it becomes an enforcement issue, that we have to be sure people register their RPZs every year. We get their certificate that they've been tested. Otherwise, we have to send an inspector out, send correspondents, please verify that you have, so it is going to increase enforcement issues.
How does for you to be able to read all of that stuff and memorize it?
Well, the trick is learning how to use the index to find what you need to find. And I took the Evelyn Wood speed reading course also.
Alderman, please.
John, in regards to changing windows and all that, we have all that soundproofing going on in town. Are these houses going to have to be like this pressure test, because they're doing all this windows and doors?
The houses won't have to be pressure tested, but the new windows will have to comply to the energy standards.
And they do already?
Yeah, typically they do.
Okay.
Alderman Cadala, the appropriate motion, since we don't have the ordinance before, should be to direct the attorney to draft an ordinance adopting the 2009 International Code. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
Question.
Alderman Wesley.
Could you put in a motion that staff continue to look at that legal issue?
I previously talked to John, that is something that we are going to be, I'm sorry, I previously talked to John, that is something that we are working on, so that we can, because John has, has brought to our attention the concerns that he has relative to that. So we'll, the final, when you see the ordinance, John and I will have worked out what would be legally required in John's best interest for the City of Wooddale.
So we don't have to put that in a motion, what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment? Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment?
Mr. Forrest.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, the one issue that we're having here that we've been discussing is, we have the sprinkler issue that we know is going to add cost to the house. We have the Energy Code issue, which we know is also going to add cost to the house. We have the brick ordinance, which we also know is going to add cost to the house. So when you factor in these three things, you could be looking at between $30,000 and $40,000 added to the cost of a new home. So that's something we have to kind of keep in the back of our minds as well.
Motion is direct the attorney to prayer ordinance, adopting the code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Public Health Safety Judiciary, Alderman Shockey.
No report.
Public Works, Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, I have two reports. One is to Oak Avenue and Powder Street Water Main Replacement. I will be making a motion to approve the contract we awarded to Land Construction Company in amount of $427,864.00.
Is there a sec? Sorry, is there a second? On the question? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
That passes?
Item number two, Mayor, reporting a recommendation payment made to Unique Corporation of $6,265.58. That will be for decorating lights, so that will be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
That passes?
Item number three, as you know, we, we had a long discussion about treatment plant. We did ask the company to come back and give us more proposal of putting upgrades on the treatment plant. The people are here tonight, and they would like to do a short presentation on what they have found. You received it in your packet. So if you don't mind, Mayor, I would like them to present.
Mr. Graff.
I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ed Coggan, and he's going to talk a little bit about some of the information they found. If you recall, just a quick background, at our last committee meeting when we discussed this, we were given the task to go back and look at maybe another alternative of just upgrading the areas most in need at North Plant and not doing the full, full expansion at this time, so they did put together some costs on that. And also included in your packet were some estimates you had seen before, to give a comparison of doing the full expansion, and with that said, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this information, and it's a follow-up from the previous meeting where we did discuss a fifth alternative to look at what it would take to upgrade the existing North Plant with no increase in capacity and no improvements in the treatment efficiency of the plant, as far as meeting future, more restrictive limits on the NPDS permit. What we presented, it was the previous four costs for the first three alternatives were what were presented back in December, as far as the plant upgrades for increased flow capacity and increased treatment efficiency. And we had discussed those in detail at the time. The fourth alternative was one that we presented at that time that was no increase in plant capacity or throughput for the North Plant, but an increase in the removal efficiency or the treatment efficiency of the plant to meet the, you know, projected upcoming new NPDS limits. And on these cost tables, there's three components to them. A is the construction cost, the capital cost for it. B is the, the engineering cost to build it for designing and construction observation and the permitting process. C is the estimated 20-year operations and maintenance cost. And then the total number at the bottom would be the, kind of a life cycle cost, looking at a 20-year life cycle for the different alternatives. Before we really get into alternative five, were there any questions or any, on the first three that were discussed back in December? It's been a while since we had looked at those.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes, this concerns, concerns the South Plant. You had mentioned about reducing. You had mentioned about reducing the flow at the South Plant to below 1 MGD.
Yes, that was a recommendation that we had, was reducing the flows at the South Plant more in line with the actual flows that it's seeing to below 1 million gallon-per-day capacity. The 1 MGD number is the difference between a, a minor NPDS discharge and a major discharge. The major discharges above 1 MGD in capacity have more restrictive limits, and they're the ones that these future limits will be applying to. So, if we keep that plant operating below 1 MGD, the, the future more restrictive limits won't apply to it.
But isn't it also true that if you reduce it below 1, that you're going to have to basically start from scratch to increase it to over 1 if you ever need to in the future?
If that plant itself, the technology that's there, you, it'd be very difficult to upgrade that plant to meet more restrictive treatment requirements. If the more restrictive limits were to be imposed on that plant, you would really have to build an entirely new plant.
That's, that's what I mean. So, it's, I think we're better off, if not increasing, at least leaving that plant where it's at now.
That was our recommendation, was to leave that plant where it is and then modify the NPDS permit to a lower, you know, a discharge limit below 1 MGD.
But if we, again, if we lower it, it's almost impossible to go back up again.
Well, if you don't lower it, you're currently rated for more than 1 MGD. It's a major discharger. Any of these more restrictive limits would be imposed on that plant.
I'm not sure I understand, but go ahead. Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, maybe I could clear this up a little bit more. I think the reason why it's got to go lower is because the EPA or the state will not give us a higher discharge up in that plant. And I believe that's the reason why we choose to go that, because we probably wouldn't get an increase from the EPA to do that.
The technology that's used at that plant, you really couldn't increase the, the capacity on that. It's very, it's limited by the clarifier overflow rate, you know, some of the, the unit processes within it. But let me see if I can answer Alderman Shockey's question a little better. Right now, South Plant is rated for more than 1 MGD. Okay? It's subject to more restrictive conditions every time the permit's being renewed, which is a five-year process. The NPDS permits can be renewed. If we were to re-permit that to where it's only permitted to discharge less than 1 MGD, then it would be a minor discharger and no longer be a major discharger. Those new more restrictive limits would not be imposed on the smaller plant. There would be no change to the physical operations at the plant. It would just be permitted for what it's normally seeing. Its average daily flow is on the order of .8 MGD. So, its flow is much less than 1 MGD, and we would just, you know, modify the permit to reflect what that current flows are.
If I may?
Alderman Shockey.
So, what, what you're saying is that if we did nothing, or if we lower it in the future, we would have to do something and spend a lot of money to bring it up to date? Either way, is that what you're?
No. If you did nothing, you would be subject to those future limits. If you lowered, if you modified your permit to the lower number, then you would not be subject to those.
But at this, but the opposite side of that would be if we did need in the future to increase it there over 1, then we would have to start from scratch, basically. So, it would even cost a lot more.
And with the planning information that was provided on the early part of the feasibility study, looking at the flow distributions throughout the city, there didn't appear to be any additional flows planned to go into the South Plant. So, that was one of the reasons why that approach was being used.
Thank you.
Alderman, please.
Mr. Coggan, just to make sure I'm clear, by lowering it under the 1 million per day, does that mean when and if EPA passes this phosphorus and nitrogen removal, that that plant would not be susceptible to having to do that? I mean, is that, is that what you're saying, or?
That is correct.
That, and that's the only reason. But if we stay over a million, then if they pass this removal of nitrogen and phosphorus, then we have to add all that stuff in. We have to add in the extra filters or whatever, all that, you know, stuff that I don't know nothing about.
And it's more of a when than an if they require that. But that is correct.
Okay.
Do you agree with that? Yes. Alderman Caddella.
On the same subject, the South Plant, is, is it correct, in the way I'm understanding this, that, that plant does not see its design capacity as it stands right now, and that the area serviced by that plant, as you said, is not planned to see any, any significant growth that will alter that capacity that it sees on average? Additionally, if we wanted to send more flow, more capacity to that plant, would you have conveyance systems, dollars to deal with to get more waste to that plant? If, if we were going to try, try to make South Plant work more at its design capacity, closer to that, that number of 1 point, whatever it is, there's not an easy way to do that. It's, it's a matter of modifying the conveyance systems, which is likely many, many thousands of dollars and.
Well, there is a, a diversion from North Plant to South Plant that could send flow down there now, and that system can send more capacity down there than what South Plant can really treat for a normal, average-day flow. Okay? So, there, the conveyance, for the most part, is in there. Unfortunately, the way it's constructed at North Plant now is it's very difficult to, to divert the flow. It's a manual operation, and there's limited controls over what that flow can be. So, it'd be very, it's, because of that reason, it's not used very much. But that conveyance system was installed.
If nothing further, I think we're ready for Alternate Five.
Okay. I'll.
Was there a question on the first four?
No, actually, the question I, I was, I apologize. The question I was going to ask is on five, so I'll defer it till after he finishes.
Let's go.
Alternative Five is looking at what it would take to upgrade the North Plant to keep the current flows rated at 1.97 MGD and not add additional unit processes for treating to what we anticipate for the phosphorus and nitrogen limits that will be coming. So, it's really, it's to upgrade the plant, because a lot of the components and unit processes are at their, end of their design life, and it's their time to be upgraded. It does not increase the capacity to it, but it does improve some of the operational deficiencies that were identified as the, the first portion of our feasibility study. We went and evaluated the conditions at the two plants. As you can see, on the, the construction cost, looking at some minor improvements, item one for the operations building in the lab, a lot of them are some structural issues. Then, upgrading the, the pumps and the controls at the raw water pump station, but not increasing their size or making the, the wet well larger. Looking at additions to the aeration tank for diffusers and some piping modifications to replace leaking air lines that are there. One of the biggest things, components of this is a secondary control building, which would increase the, the performance and the operations of the, the clarifiers and the secondary RAS transfer and wasting system, and get a better flow diversion or controls to the two clarifiers. Looking at upgrading the clarifier equipment is item number five. Number six would be adding a GBT. It's a gravity belt thickener. It's part of the solids handling. There is, one place is really undersized at the North Plant, and that is the digester capacity for the solids. There's two ways to deal with that. One is to construct more digestors. The other is to thicken the sludge and use less digester volume. Basically, pull some of the water out so you can digest a, a smaller volume.